Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the special session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Thursday, July 15, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Terapani is absent and excused. Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiottis.
Here.
Before we go to the public comments, again, I'd like to remind to everyone that, based on the city code, all public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the Meeting, in a professional manner, with respect, without our personal attacks. We will now go to the public comments, on the items who will not be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you'll be given four minutes.
Anita Protus, 901 Bayshore Drive, Tarpon Springs. To the shock of a lot of us Tuesday night, we heard about the bridge by the yacht club, that they've been working on it for over a year. Thank goodness that a citizen found out about it and brought it forward to us. Someone in the city knew about it, never told us. I'm asking you, Mayor, to call, to have a public meeting of the citizens of Tarpon, to come and see the plans of the bridge, talk to the engineers, and talk to the county commissioners, so we can let them know how we feel about it. Because it is going to ruin the beauty of the river there, and infringe on the homes that are right next to it. So we need to have a public meeting. Shocking to all of us, it had gone through before we knew what was happening. Thank you.
We're in process of doing that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Bach. I'm here because of the red tide. And I'm looking on just the Palm Harbor path, and it says that on Monday and Sunday alone, they collected 124 tons of dead fish. And they're trying to remove these fish before they go through the canals. The problem that we're having with, and as you all know, with the red tide, it's affecting tourism. It's affecting people who come to visit. I've recently had my own family come to visit, and they, all of them, were feeling sick about it. I feel that the environment has been ignored by the development in all these areas. We have natural filtration systems that were not allowing the water to be cleansed through that. And every time we keep building, we're putting more fertilizer in the ground, we're putting, you know, more chemicals in the ground. I'm not even talking about manufacturing, I'm talking about homes. I'm talking about taking away the land, the filtration system. I think that we need to really look at this agenda, not only for the flooding, which is a really huge problem. Because if you take trees out, where's the, you know, who's going to absorb the water, right? Concrete doesn't. It's just a really huge problem, and we're not looking for the future. We're not looking for 10 years from now, we're looking at two years now, the revenue that we give for everybody to, you know, build new houses and build everything. Yeah, that's how we get our taxes here, right? Because we have homesteads, so everybody doesn't have their increase in their taxes for their homes. And we don't have any state taxes, you know, for our income. So the way that the counties obviously are making money, and the state's making money, is by selling off or allowing the counties to sell up land, accepting what's being, you know, written down by the engineer, saying that it's going to be fine and dandy 10 years from now. But we all know what is happening. 10 years ago, it was very different. I mean, you can't even fish your own waterways anymore.
Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Linda Bach.
And your address?
800 Missouri Avenue.
In Tarpon Springs?
Palm Harbor.
Oh.
But it affects me too, here. I work at Total Fitness. I have people that come to visit all the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Harriet Kledakis, and I live on 215 West Lemon Street. I have been in Tarpon Springs since 1960, and I've always was proud of my town, but not lately. Unfortunately, a lot of things have changed, and the last few years, as a matter of fact, I represent my neighborhood, on Lemon Street between Shattuck and Beth. I have called six years ago, Mr. Tom, the historic, I mean, the Director of Public Works, and I told him that my street floods, my street is uneven, they have holes, and I always he promised me he'll take care of it. Actually, one year, between those six years, somebody came, I guess the mayor or whatever, they put some sticks, but weeks later, they were gone. Nothing was done. Until last year, I called Mr. Licurys, and I was told that something would take place after Christmas. I called in January, nothing. And Christmas came and gone, I'm still waiting. And it was, even though we were told they're going to be done in a month, I run and told my neighbors, and everybody was happy, but nothing was done. But yet, I gave up. So since then, I see the Tarpon spending money paving streets that are not in the historic area where my house is, and you paving everything. You fixing sidewalks, everything, even over here, I see you fixing streets. But yet, my office is in the historic society district, and then you avoiding it. I, as a matter of fact, you worked on mirrors, making the mirrors street, you had all the equipment, you had all the equipment that you could take care of the area, but nothing. And I have pictures of my street. You will send employees to come and put cement or whatever, but after a while, it will come off. I had a flat tire. I should have brought all the bill, and you pay for it. My street, my sidewalk, it's broken, and it's not even even. And what happens when the people walk? They trip. I hope they fall down, and then they kiss you the city. And that's the fact, I have pictures. But you all don't have money, you keep telling me, but yet the city employees have new cars, good trucks. You don't have money for us, but yet I see a dire expensive sign that you put by the water tank. You don't have streets, but you bought a lot by the flagship parking lot. You paved it, that it did not need it. You planted flowers, trees, in a parking lot? But then you waste the taxpayers' money. I have nine properties that used to get taxes from me, property taxes. What do I get? Nothing. No, and all my neighbors are the same thing, and I represent them. And like I told over and over again, it's only part of Lemon Street, not the whole street. And what happens? Nothing. We pay sewer on every month, but yet we flood between Shattuck and Lemon, Beth and Lemon. Is that what the city?
Ms. Kledakis, your time has expired. Thank you.
Is that what the city's supposed to be doing to its citizens? This is a historic area where I am.
Mr. Kledakis, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mr. Licurys, would you please address that issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, please reiterate to the crowd how the public comments work, because I've had a number of people ask me if they can come speak about Hayes Road or the Anclot Harbor. So just want people to know, this is public comments, not on the agenda, and then after the presentation and staff report, and all that stuff happens, that's when people would be allowed to speak on either Hayes Road or the Anclot Harbor project.
I did announce that.
I know, but a lot of people are new here, and they're not familiar with the rules. So if you just clarify it for them.
Good advice, thank you.
So, I have Mr. Wagon for here, he will be donating.
I'd like to donate time to Mr. Galax, Carl White, Ward, and Yen Shaw, Ironbath Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
You have six minutes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. So I relate it to city. A lot of people here don't know what y'all have been doing the last few months, between workshops, ordinance removals. After the COVID thing ended, and they went back to the old rules, no more emails being read, no more Zoom, no more phone call-in. So now, unless you show up here, your voice isn't heard. And I want to thank every one of you to let this board know. Now, something new you may not know, but if you've watched meetings, you'll see what I'm going to do. I will read some scripture from the Book of the Lord, Proverbs 11, 1-11. "The Lord aborers dishonest scales, but accurate weights are his delight. When pride comes, then comes disgrace; but with humility comes wisdom. The integrity of the upright guides them; but the unfaithful are destroyed by their duplicity. Wealth is worthless in the day of wrath, but righteousness delivers from death. The righteousness of the blameless makes a straight way for them; but the wicked are brought down by their own wickedness. The righteousness of the upright delivers them; but the unfaithful are trapped by their evil desires. When a wicked man dies, his hope perishes; all he expects from his power comes to nothing. The righteous man is rescued from trouble, and it comes on the wicked instead. When his mouth, the godless destroys his neighbor, but through knowledge the righteous escape. When the righteous prosper, the city rejoices. When the wicked perish, there are shouts of joy." Next, Ecclesiastes 5-10. Whoever loves money never has money enough. Whoever loves wealth is never satisfied with his income.
Mr. Kledakis, keep your voice down, please.
This too is meaningless. These are God's words.
Yeah.
Yeah. 6 Jeremiah 13-15. "From the least to the greatest all are greedy for gain. Prophets and priests alike all practice deceit. They dress the wound of my people as though it were not serious. Peace, peace, they say, when there is no peace. Are they ashamed of their loathsome conduct? No, they have no shame at all. They do not even know how to blush. So they will fall among the fallen; they will be brought down when I punish them," says the Lord. Jeremiah 8, 10-12. "Therefore I will give their wives to other men, and their fields to the new owners. From the least to the greatest all are greedy for gain. Prophets and priests alike all practice deceit. They dress the wound of my people as though it were not serious. Peace, peace, they say, where there is no peace. Are they ashamed of their loathsome conduct? No, they have no shame at all. They do not even know how to blush. So they will fall among the fallen; they will be brought down when they are punished," says the Lord. Next, Micah 2-14. "Woe to those who plan iniquity, to those who plot evil on their beds. At morning lights they carry it out, because it is in their power to do it. They covet fields and seize them, and houses, and take them. They defraud a man of his home, a fellow man of his inheritance."
Is that time?
No, I'm not sure why that went off.
Okay.
Inheritance.
Last three minutes.
"I am planning disaster against this people, from which you cannot save yourselves. You will no longer walk proudly, for it will be a time of calamity. In that day men will ridicule you; they will taunt you with this mournful song. We are utterly ruined. My people's possession is divided up. He takes it from me. He assigns our fields to traitors." Luke 12, 15. "Then he said to them, Watch out! Be on your guard against all kinds of greed. A man's life does not consist in the abundance of his possessions." Okay, that was Timothy 6, 9. There we go. Timothy, chapter 6, 9 through 10. "People who want to get rich fall into temptation and a trap, and to many foolish and harmful desires that plunge men into ruin and destruction. For the love of money is the root of all kinds of evil. Some people eager for money have wandered from their faith and peer themselves with James 3, 13 to 16. "Who is wise and understanding among you? Let him show it by his good life, by deeds done in the humility that comes from wisdom. But if you harbor bitter envy and selfish ambition in your hearts, do not boast about it or deny the truth. Some wisdom does not come down from heaven, but is earthly and spiritual of the devil. From where you have envy and selfish ambition, there you find disorder and every evil practice." And lastly, Peter 2, 2 through 5 and 9. "Many will follow their shameful ways, and will bring the way of truth into disrepute. In their greed these teachers will exploit you with stories they have made up. Their condemnation has long been hanging over them, and their destruction has not been sleeping." And then we go to 9. "If this is so, then the Lord knows how to rescue godly men from trials, and to hold the unrighteousness of the day of judgment while continuing their punishment." This is your chance to rewrite history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker again, please. Again, this is for public comments that will not, for items that will not be going discussed tonight.
Hi, my name is Gail Johnston, and I'm at 2501 Islander Court in Palm Harbor. I'm here to express my concern about the sudden rush of overdevelopment of large portions of land, and land locally.
Is this, has to do with Hayes?
No.
Okay.
This is in general. And land locally, and the loss of individual trees on private properties. The loss of the oak trees in particular are a concern for me, because of my knowledge with their ability to control erosion, high winds, loss of relocation, sorry, loss and relocation of nature, UV protection for residents, and just children and things playing outside, air quality, and even property values. The issue with adding abundance of new residents in the area due to the overdevelopment in many areas is that it puts a strain on our already established infrastructure. As I've already experienced locally, a breaking of sewers, and every time I have to pass by, you smell sewer. It's very disappointing to have these kind of things happening. And we also are having such a huge issue with transportation, and I've already had to speak with FDOT several times about issues, to the point where some of the issues, I do not feel they're being handled appropriately, and it's causing a safety and efficiency issue locally. Thank you.
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. So I'm here to speak about the First Amendment. Just a few weeks ago, this board voted to reduce our First Amendment right, by eliminating the reading of emails into public comment. That all started early January, because hundreds of people wrote emails in opposition to a project that the city was voting on. And they didn't want anybody to know that, so they tried to shut it down. And they illegally voted on the 7th. They illegally voted, by that I mean, they voted at the end of the meeting, during Commissioner comments, which is illegal. You can't vote on anything as a commissioner during Commissioner comments, anything that would affect another person in the city. But they did it anyway. And that vote failed, because another commissioner, who was supposed to be recused, voted double illegally, and then the vote failed. So only Commissioner Costa-Vaticiottis and the mayor voted to allow those emails to be read on the 15th, and they were read. But then, just a few weeks ago, the mayor joined with the rest, and he decided he doesn't want to hear from you. So if you can't make it here, for one reason or another, he doesn't want to hear from you. He doesn't want anybody else to hear from you, and neither do the rest of these people. And that vote will stick with them the rest of their days. It will be easy to track these four people. If they ever try to run for another office, you contact the media, and you let them know how they voted. To squelch our voice, to silence the people, and you let them know that this man, Commissioner Vaticiottis, stood up for us a couple of weeks ago, said he wanted that. He further wanted to allow Zoom and phone calls to these meetings. Just because the governor thinks that, you know, this disease is gone, doesn't mean it's gone. It doesn't listen to him. So some people are scared, they don't want to come out here. These seats would be filled otherwise. Just like back in the 2004 era, during the Walmart thing, we beat Walmart with hundreds of people showing up here. And that mayor wasn't afraid. Beverly Bellerus was on the wrong side of my opinion. However, she would allow the meetings to go on all night long. She wasn't worried about how long the meetings went. She would let the meetings go.
Cut your voice down, sir, cut your voice down.
Yes, see, there you go again. Trying to silence the voice of the people.
Please stop, stop, stop. Let me finish, stop for a minute.
Pause the time, thank you.
It will be no more clapping during the debate. There's no clapping during the debate, please do not do that again. Okay?
Anyway.
Don't do that. No clapping during debate or during public comments. Okay? Please respect this place here. Thank you.
So further, from now on, any candidate that's running for office in this city has to come out in public and state that they will change it back and reaffirm our First Amendment rights. They need to come out and publicly say how they stand on this. And if they don't, then we know that they're with the crew. Terapani, Alahuzis, Carr, and Donovan, the ones that don't want to hear from the people and don't want the people to hear from other people. So we can't have that anymore. We need our First Amendment right in this city and in our country. We can't have this anymore. This won't stand, this board will be replaced, but it will only be replaced by candidates that will stand up for the people and the First Amendment, our right to redress grievances against our government. We can't have it anymore. It's not too late, you know you can fix it before you leave office. You could turn this thing back around, and then that stench won't go with you. You can fix it today. Illegally vote at the end during comment, and just say, hey, we're fixing this, just like you did on the advice of your attorney, who should have known better, but he's the one who told you you could vote that way. Wow, what's going on here? Great representation and great legal advice, huh? Not at all. We got the law on our side. You know, you threw a guy out of this meeting with the cops. Yeah, oh yeah, they threw a guy out of here. Illegally. That's yet to come back and bite you, and it will. Just like this, will be fought in court and won in court, or you will just be replaced and will reinstate the prior rules. Whatever it's going to take, freedom will ring. Thank you.
Guys not listening, please, you need to respect this place. Guys not listening? Please. You need to respect this place. You're not in a coffee shop. Please don't do that again. Thank you.
We ready?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I came up here to speak about sustainability, but I kind of was have to ducktail off of, I am a candidate and I'm not up here to advertise a candidate. But I have been up here a number of times, and I will be turning around that vote because I do want to hear what the public has to say. That's part of the charter. The charter for a commissioner is to listen to the residents. Whether they agree with them or not is a different story. But they can at least listen and hear them out. One of the things I know what's coming up is a vote on a sustainability chair. And I want to go on record saying we, we cannot be splitting up the chair into multiple positions. We need one chair for the Sustainability Committee. And if you, if, if someone doesn't know what that position is or what they do, I'm happy to explain it to them. We have issues with flooding. We have issues with sewer backup. We have issues going on. And every single part of this town has to be around what the Sustainability Chair does, thinks, and it has to be a part of what we do as a city. It's unfortunate that at the same time we have this meeting, the Sustainability Committee is not here to hear or see any of what we're doing here. And unfortunately, the Ankle Project that I will speak about later is part of that. That's wetlands, and they should be involved with this as much as everybody that's here. So I will be speaking more about that later. But for now, it's a shame that the Sustainability Committee is not here to witness what's going on and listen to the people. I know this is recorded, but theirs is not. Theirs is audio, but it's not recorded so where you could see who's speaking. And I think this is also a shame. We spend money on so many things, as the person before me had said, on things that are just a waste of money or pet projects that make people happy, but they don't make the residents happy. And I would like to make sure that what I, what I do as a commissioner makes the residents happy. And that's all I have to say. And I, and I didn't really appreciate being shut down Tuesday night. I will say that.
Just a correction. We're not looking for Sustainability Chair as coordinator. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lee Tenasi, 1413 Cell Harbor Circle in Tarpon Springs. I'm here to express my disbelief and certainly displeasure with the city and in the matter in which you have voted to eliminate Zoom meetings. It is absolutely incredible that in situations like the one that we encounter in the last two years, some good things do come out of it. And one of those things is our ability to interact with our city officials. In a city where the average age has increased four years over the last 10, we are a 52-year average city today, much older, by the way, than some of our neighboring cities. You have decided to eliminate probably one of the best ways for which you can communicate with your, with your people. It is beyond me. You're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on all kind of crappy deals that you're making behind our backs, yet you did not have an ability to actually support Zoom. And don't behave like that when they're talking about clapping hands because I'm sure if I would be saying something here to congratulate you when you're a beautiful workmaster, Mayor, you would be happy to get an applause. Is that true?
Sir?
So to ask you to continue basically with my speech, I have my three minutes. I'm really trying to get my time in. The reality of the matter is that acting in this manner in the last term, the last time that you can actually be a mayor of this city, really shows your true colors. It is absolutely incredible that you have done this type of things to our community. I'm a new member, by the way, only three years moved into the city because of what I learned about it. And I love the Greek heritage, but I definitely hate your politics. Thank you.
Sir, would you please tell us your name and your address?
I did that in the beginning.
Yes.
Lee Tenasi, 1413 Cell Harbor Circle.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Joanne Simon, 206 Sunshine Drive. I just wanted to let you know that I was very disappointed to hear that y'all refused to read emails into record. I emailed one day when I was unable to attend Commissioner's meeting. I tried to let you know my opinion on one of the subjects that you were, had before the board. Only one of the commissioners took their time to email me back and let me know that he appreciated my email and that he, you know, appreciated what I had to say. The fact that you all voted, not all, but those of you that voted to not read emails into record, it's just very disappointing, you know, to hear that the city I love, you know, doesn't appreciate what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please. Do we have any other public comments?
Uh, these are all my own thoughts and expressions. Anybody donating their time is simply doing that just for me to be speaking. Annie Samarcus will be donating her time. Does anybody else want to donate two minutes?
You guys have to identify yourself.
Chair, Mayor, 45 West, North Bay.
Thank you.
Angelo Wilson, 601, Ivy Lane, South End.
Thank you. You have 10 minutes, sir.
It's going to start up over here or? Good evening, Tarpon Springs. I'm not speaking here as a politician. I'm speaking as a Tarponite. I don't want nobody to say I'm campaigning at the podium. Running or not, I would still be up here saying the same thing, just like I was when we first caught this Ankle Harbors incident. And I was able to notify, save the Ankle, turn the tide for Tarpon as this was all rushed under the disguise of COVID. And, um, Mayor, I'm going to start off with the bad news, then we'll work up with the good news. The last meeting during the public comments. I just don't appreciate acts, fronts, facades, charades, scripted acts of kindness. I like leaders taking stances in advance and not after. Real leadership comes from influence. And, you know, at times I'll thank the city manager one day, and I'll tell, and today I'm going to tell my disappointment. You know, I'm not happy we're having a special session on this issue. What is the rush in rushing this topic? You guys are tied up in court anyways. You know? Then it's during the sustainability's meeting, and I sent an email because I saw one of the candidates for mayor, Robin Sanger, was very vocal about the West Claustromine Preserve, which I'm very happy with that. I thought it was an act from Townsend, as well as might have been scripted for him to reply right back away. Oh, let's bring up a discussion. And Carr to follow through with it. So I asked her via email to give her stance on the Ankle Harbors prior to the decision tonight. We haven't heard her speak about Ankle Harbors, and it's important that we hear if she's for or against it, regardless of the board's vote tonight. She speaks one time and, you know, Townsend asks for his concerns. I mean, she must be a mover and shaker. I don't know. It just, it looked very scripted. And there should be no reason why she can't give a stance on Ankle Harbors. It's been discussed for a long time. And I was also upset with how you all excused Commissioner Terapani. I asked on behalf of the citizens of Tarpon Springs that he come to tonight's meeting, regardless if he was going to vote. We know he's well fitting behind this operation. He has a lot to do with it. You know, working with his family and, uh, his stepmother and father have a lot to do with it, and he, they're used as the front. You know, and I'm disappointed with the whole board. The whole board for excusing him. We have a right to see transparency, honesty. And when people are making money off the city, we have a right to watch them watch us fight back. Now, I'm going to discuss Ankle Harbor's property and how we got to where we are today. I will save the traffic and safety concerns for the items during the agenda later. I personally, you know, ask on behalf of the residents that Tarpon Springs and, oh, let me skip this part. We have to have accountability, no matter how small of a town we are. And I'm sure someone's going to come up here and try to defend the network, but I'm going to defend the people of Tarpon Springs. I will always defend each and every neighborhood, just like I don't want Distant to go through on the Oakley Village side. Just like I don't want Hayes Road to go through either because it's not feasible. So how did we get where we're at to today? Who are all the key players? You know, this project is four years in the making, and the public didn't find out about it until November of last year. Disappointed that the city manager didn't reach out to all these activists, turn the tide, say, I mean, nobody. Like I said, this was all pushed under the disguise of COVID. And let's talk about Renee Vincent, our Planning and Zoning Director. Lots of zoning and density issues are starting to occur because the good old boys brought her back to do just that. You know, I like her. She conforms to what Tarpon Springs residents want the city's density and zoning to be and not with Pinellas or the special interests in this town. You know, if she can conform to what we want, she has a long career here. I firmly believe that. Now, the Planning and Zoning Board. This board to me is, I think it's a joke. Special interests get what they want, and the majority on the board won't vote against John Terapani. Renee Vincent presented the variances to the property that were comparable to anomalies way outside of the outliers that didn't make sense, but yet the P&amp;Z Board approved it. Same members of the P&amp;Z Board get deals done that benefit them months later. You know, Cindy Terapani, how much is she making from this property, planning it? Let's disclose that. Let's have an open and honest government. The people want to know. And John Terapani, will he speak tonight? He's been attending the meetings lately and he's, you know, I don't want him to sit there and have Anita Protas come up and do his dirty work. Let him speak for himself. You know, if I had Anita on my side, this whole network would have been broken up months ago. You know, Ex parte communications, city attorney, I know it's the commissioner's job to announce it, but I ask that you always ask the commission on ex parte communications so something is not forgotten. And we want to hear all the details, not simple vague ones that we just talked about back at Hayes Road. Every detail, full disclosure. Why do they recommend? Why do these people come to you to talk about why they think it's for the best interest of Tarpon Springs? So it's very important ex parte communications are disclosed to the fullest. And I'd like to see that commissioner's interest brought up earlier on the board so the people can see. Now we got Mr. Ed Armstrong and Tom Trask. They worked together. I think at the beginning, Mr. Trask was trying to influence the board about fulfilling the needs and the standards of these variances from the first and second reading, and that was not acceptable. You know, Ed Armstrong's a land use attorney. This guy has a lot of pull with judges and attorneys, but he can't twist a testimony under oath tonight and the past testimony. You know, Armstrong was appointed to the govern, to the governing board in June 2014 and reappointed in October 2020. His term expires March 1st, 2022. Armstrong believes that his experience on other boards and significant community involvement enhances his ability to serve the residents of the district as a member of the governing board. And that board is swift mud. Okay? The governing board represents a wide cross-section of interests, including agricultural, recreational, business, urban, rural, and the public. Here's Ed Armstrong, who helps the public against wetlands being impacted, and then he's trying to rip them away from us. But there's good news, I promise. I never offer, I always offer a solution to the problems I address. The good news is, we still have a chance. The developers' mistakes and false testimony have given you the blueprint. It's all there. Don't worry about any lawsuits. You can't get sued. And with what's on testimony, Mr. Trask has the easiest defense you can think of. It's all there. So, and one last thing, not all heroes wear capes. And this board can be heroes today in Tarpon Springs and forever in its history. They will be recognized as leaders in the community, and they can save the day. They can save the future of our charming beloved town of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Please come forward to the podium.
Justin Vesey, 467 Bryland Street, Tarpon Springs. I didn't come tonight to speak, but as a member of the Planning and Zoning Volunteer Board for several years, and as a previous member of the Code Enforcement Board for a number of years, and that person's chair, or that board's chair, I thought I should at least make some comments. This is a very controversial project. The meeting tonight, special, is controversial also. For the record, I was not present and did not vote when the Ankle Project.
Sir, if it is for the item, can you wait till the item comes up? This is only for items. Sir, this is only for public comments on, that it's not on the agenda.
Bless your heart.
Thank you, sir.
Forgive me. I came late.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for serving on the Planning and Zoning. Mr. Cuilias. Mr. Cuilias.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will make sure you speak when the time comes. Thank you. Do we have any, any public comments on the items that were not going to be discussed tonight? Okay. Thank you. We are now going to the agenda of the item number one. Decision on Hayes Road construction alternatives for secondary access to the Ankle Harbor Apartments project.
Mr. Mayor, before we come forward with the presentation, as you see in the backup from the last two days, you've got a letter from the representative of the Morgan Group that their plans are to withdraw this application that we're presently dealing with and to submit a new application at a later time. I've talked to their attorney today, Mr. Armstrong, and he is here in the audience and has confirmed that. They are planning, and the attorney can say it in his words, so I don't say anything out of line, that they are withdrawing this application and plan to file a new one. So I suggest you might want to hear from Mr. Armstrong first as this item tonight is to discuss the Hayes Road construction alternative for second access, and that would go away with a new application.
Mr. Armstrong, when you're, come to the podium, please.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Ed Armstrong. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Hillward Henderson. We are located at 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800 in Clearwater. As mentioned, I do represent the Morgan Group. And consistent with the correspondence we have sent into the city, we will be filing a new application for the project. And the only material difference between the new application we're getting ready to file and then it was previous, the one that was previously approved by this commission is the addition of a second access point on US 19. So with those two access points, which will be shown on our new application, that will be fully compliant with the Land Development Code requirement that there be two access points for a project greater than 50 units. And as you know, our project is certainly greater than 50 units. Hayes Road came into discussion when we were requesting a waiver to the two access point requirement in the previous application. That's not the case. So therefore, our belief is that the Hayes Road So therefore, our belief is that the Hayes Road discussion is moot because the new application will be filing shortly. Additionally, the Hayes Road, we believe that the Hayes Road discussion is moot because this commission was quite clear in the previous approval that on the discussion regarding Hayes Road, eminent domain was not to be used. That was included in your motion. It was part of a condition. And while, you know, Cardino did their report, and it's touched upon very briefly in their narrative, but if you look at the matrix, we contend that there was a mistake, and in fact, for the three alternatives that are not, the no-build alternative, eminent domain is required for each of those three alternatives. That's contrary to the direction of this commission, that eminent domain not be used. Another reason why the Hayes Road discussion is moot. All this has been documented, the materials we've sent to you. And then finally, I know the city, as part of their due diligence, submitted the materials regarding Hayes Road to Pinellas County. It's their right of way for an informal review, and the feedback was a letter from the Public Works Director, Ms. Kelly Levy, discouraging very much the opening up of Hayes Road and suggesting that the no-build alternative was the, was the preferred way to go here. So in no case in our view is Hayes Road is going to be considered. We are gonna file the new application to access point code compliant. Now, it's discretion of this commission, but I don't know how much time you wanna spend debating Hayes Road when it's not gonna be part of our application. So if you do discuss Hayes Road, I do have some testimony I would like to submit at that time, but for now, I'm finished with my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong, and I'd like to address our seat attorney. Procedurally now that, based on what it was presented to us by Mr. Armstrong, who represents the Morgan Group, that the application has been withdrawn and it will be resubmitted as a new application, which means that we're gonna have, going through this, the process will start from the beginning. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So now that we have no issue to resolve, where do we go from here?
May I make one clarification?
Yes.
We are not in a position to withdraw the first application. It has it has become an ordinance, so we're not in a position to do that. That's the only procedural clarification I will offer.
Okay.
And that's correct. When, when the second application comes back, the ordinance that you will consider would be to consider to approve their preliminary plan. In addition to that, the ordinance would provide for the repealing of Ordinance 2020-34. To answer your question relative to the agenda item tonight, the agenda item tonight is decision on Hayes Road construction alternatives for second access to Anclot Harbor apartment project. There no longer being a need to make that decision because they're not moving forward with that particular project, and that there's, there would be no need to move forward for discussion on the issue relative to whether you want to authorize that or not. So it's my opinion that the matter is closed at this point. I mean, obviously you can hear from the public if you wanna do that, Mayor, but but there is nothing to decide at this point since that portion of the application is mooted.
Since we're going to have a new application, we still gonna have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board and public hearings and all that. Is that correct?
Yes, we're gonna do this whole thing all over again, as if, like a brand-new application. Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question, procedural question.
Yes.
Um, we've got an ordinance that required a decision. It's in place. The city manager scheduled this special session to satisfy one provision of that ordinance, which is in there, to make a decision on Hayes Road. We advertised it. We're here. I don't care, as Mr. Armstrong said, it, you know, we need to make a decision, but the residents are here. I'm not for just saying, okay, well, don't worry about it. Let's not worry about it tonight. I think the residents need to have, I think we need to have a formality of a vote, if that's all it's gonna take to eliminate that road. And I think as part of that process, you've got public comment, and I think the residents are here to speak their mind. I think we need to go forward with that. It's an ordinance, Mayor. There's nothing we can do about that. It was properly advertised. The people are here. They need to be able to speak their mind.
I'm gonna go back to the, to the seat attorney for his legal-
So the, the condition is set forth in an ordinance. There's no question about that. But the question is, is that particular question moot or not? Based upon the statement that was being made by Mr. Armstrong, I believe the issue is moot. In other words, it doesn't need to be discussed.
Well, Mr. Armstrong-
So that doesn't, that doesn't mean that the public can't address you on the issue, but it's not a decision that you necessarily need to make. If you wanna go to the, the, basically the pro forma of having a motion saying that you don't want to approve this Hayes Road extension, there's no harm, no foul, but there's, there's no need in my mind to do that.
Okay. Well, since we, we have all these concerned citizens here, and I agree with, I think we should give the opportunity to the people to speak. And now the, the picture of the, the project has changed. There will have no, we'll have no application active right now because they withdrew the application. It's going to start all over.
Mayor, I have one last question, procedurally.
Sir, let me finish. Let me finish, will you?
I thought you were finished.
No, thank you. So I believe that we should give the opportunity to the public to provide us with their opinion, even though that we have nothing really to, we have nothing to resolve because there's no issue on the table right now. I'll need to ask the other board here if everybody agrees to it. Commissioner Vatici, yours, do you have an opinion that you say?
I, I just had one question. I didn't quite understand what Mr. Armstrong was saying as far as the you're stating that you're withdrawing your application. I'm addressing you, Mayor. Mr. Armstrong stated that they're withdrawing their application, and, and he felt that that was not, there was something else that had to happen in order for that to take place. Is that correct?
May I answer?
Yes, sir.
Yes. The statement was made that we are withdrawing the first application. There is no more first application. It merged into the ordinance that was approved by the commission. Therefore, we're unable to withdraw the prior application. It does, it's become an ordinance, so it would be incorrect to say we're withdrawing the first application. You'd be completely correct to say we will be filing a second application, which will, as Mr. Trask mentioned, if approved, would then supersede and negate the first ordinance.
Right, and, and that's exactly what I wanted to confirm. Just because you're withdrawing the application doesn't mean this ordinance goes away.
There's no application to withdraw.
Right. I understand that.
Fair enough.
What I'm saying is, whatever you said about starting fresh doesn't affect this ordinance unless something else happens to affect it. Either through another ordinance, through the new application that would come forward, or by the commission taking action, which I believe would require two readings to cancel this ordinance based on your representation that it's no longer needed.
Well, the ordinance is still in place.
That's what I'm getting at.
That was the result of our first applica-, I'm not, I don't dispute that at all.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay.
Could I add an opinion, Mayor?
Yes. If everybody agrees, we're gonna go to public comments.
I don't agree right now.
Don't agree?
No. So just a quick comment.
Please wait.
This, this is an opportunity. The discussion point was tonight, decision on Hayes Road. The applicant, the applicant was clear that Hayes Road is not moving forward, so I think it's a lot of good news for the residents in that area, if that was the concern. The next point is that you're gonna have many opportunities to come back and speak on this project. The applicant and the attorney then confirmed that it's gonna have to go through Planning and Zoning, which is one meeting. It's gonna have to go through the Board of Commission for a first reading and a Board of Commission for a second reading. So it's three different meetings that this is gonna have to go through again and be vetted through a quasi-judicial hearing, sworn in, sworn-in speakers, and so on. So tonight, the discussion was on Hayes Road specifically. There is no other discussion that needs to be made tonight because the applicant made it clear there's no more Hayes Road that's gonna be done. If we wanna look at this further as, as a whole project, I think there's gonna be plenty of ample time to speak and public comments in these next few months when the applicant, when the applicant comes back and presents before the board. So with this tonight, there's nothing else to speak on, I believe, and-
Oh, I disagree, if I could.
Thank you. So-
Would you please have your seat for a second? I'm waiting patiently.
Clarification as well, from an email standpoint, that was brought up earlier. Emails are always part of the public record, although just like all of our backups are, there's hundreds of pages that are in the public record. We don't read every single page of the backup into the record. So we receive your emails. We get your emails. We read them. We're, we're happy to receive them. We're always grateful for public to reach out to us. You can call our cell phones. You can send us emails. We're not stifling your First Amendment right in that aspect from an email standpoint. It started with COVID, when the state emergency happened, when the state emergency was lifted. That's when the emails then went away from being read into the record as well. So although you've sent an email, we still receive the email. We read the email. It goes in the backup. It goes in the public backup for the record. So it's still in the record for your, just for clarification on the public comment from earlier. So to move forward, I don't think we need to go forward with public comment tonight because we're not, we have nothing to talk about.
So-
Mayor, I still, I still need to speak.
Can I give you the floor? Please sit down for a minute, till it's time. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Commissioner Donovan.
So just to do a quick rundown again, Hayes Road is not happening. It's never going to happen. The applicant withdrew it. Hayes Road is not moving forward.
Sir.
Sir, I didn't interrupt you. Please.
I corrected you twice. Would you please stop? Thank you.
Hayes, Hayes Road itself is, is not gonna move forward, but I'm happy if you wanna treat this like a town hall to discuss the project as a whole. I get that. I understand that. I'm good with that. But I don't wanna see the Hayes Road presentation tonight. I don't wanna see Morgan Group get up and discuss Hayes Road because it's never gonna happen.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Vatici, yours, I will-
I just have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Donovan, did you wanna finish or?
No, I just got some jeers saying it, it, it might still happen, but it can't happen because of eminent domain. We said that there wouldn't be any eminent domain allowed on the original project, and in order for Hayes Road to be built, it would require eminent domain, and so that cannot happen based on our previous decision.
Mayor, I, I'm sorry. I do have a question. I have one question for the city attorney.
Go ahead.
Hypothetically, the applicant continues on with FDOT. FDOT says, oh, we made a mistake. You can't have a second access. We get a letter from them saying, well, we rescind our original order saying that we can't build Hayes Road. We're gonna go ahead with it because that's the only way we can do our, our project. That's still possible. Is that correct?
Yes, that's still possible, and you have the right, under the ordinance, within 90 days of the final development plan approval to tell them that you're not going to allow that. So the timeframe is way off for you to make that ultimate decision.
No, I, I understand, and I think that was the point of, of this representation that Hayes Road is not gonna happen. We don't have anything other than a letter that came into us. I, according to, I mean, from what I see, we have an ordinance on, on the table, a valid ordinance that's, that requires either making a decision on that or if, and if we decline to do it, then there's still the option of an emergency access, although I'm not sure how the two are connected in that, in my reading of it. And, and I guess what I'm getting at is either the commission can accept a letter from the applicant and then, and then tell everybody here, well, it's not gonna happen, but there's still that prospect of something happening later on, and then all of a sudden, we are gonna do Hayes Road. And that, that's all I'm trying to say, is I, I just wanna keep it official and, and formal as far as how we proceed, and I appreciate the letter from the applicant, but I, I'm sure if if Mr. Armstrong was in your position, you'd probably say we need to have something a little more formal than the letter, than that. In terms of, for certainty that Hayes Road is not gonna be built. And then there's also a matter of $444,000.
Right, and that wasn't part of the issue tonight that we were gonna discuss, in my understanding, but as for something more formal, I'm not sure, other than, you know, I have a written agreement where both parties sign it. There's been a representation, and-
Well, the, the formal agreement is the commission making a motion of whether we're gonna build Hayes Road or not, and the answer is gonna be no, based on the preliminary engineering report, which is what we, which was, what's in the ordinance. That's all I'm saying. We're all here tonight for that purpose, and I appreciate the applicant withdrawing and, and, or wanting to submit a new application, but that doesn't mean that the ordinance has gone away and there's still an obligation under the ordinance. And, and of course, I understand what you're saying. Nothing needs to be done.
Correct.
But we could've also canceled this meeting tonight too, based on the letter, and we didn't do that.
That's correct.
That's right. And that's my point. We've called everybody else out. Now we're trying to cancel the, you know, the decision on it. I just don't, I don't wanna make an issue of, I'm just simply saying, I just don't think it's fair for maybe about 100 people, 150 people to bring them out. Now we're telling them we can, we're canceling the meeting, and we could've done that yesterday? How many days ago did we get the letter? We could've done that yesterday based on the city manager's recommendation, but we didn't do that. So-
So finally, what's the final word, you final advice, seat attorney?
I don't believe you need to address the Hayes Road issue tonight. You have up until 90 days. Within 90 days of the final development plan approval, according to Condition Number 22. However, if you wanna hear the public's comments on the issue, you have the right to do that.
Okay. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna go with the attorney's recommendation that since we have no issue, we can reserve, but I'd like to hear the comments from the people. So since we have two board members that wish not to have public comments, I'd like to have a motion to do that.
Motion to hear the residents' comments, public comments concerning the matter this evening.
Second. Any comments on that?
Just for clarity, is this for the Anclot Project? It's not about Hayes Road, right?
This is on Hayes Road only. To hear what the, the residents have to say, even though that, at this time, we have no issue to resolve.
Okay, so this is strictly Hayes Road, so if it goes off-topic, it's gonna be on Hayes Road only, right?
Just the Hayes Road. Mr. Cuyas, I didn't ask you about that. Just a second.
Mayor.
I, I was under the impression that now Hayes Road isn't going to happen, but this is gonna be more, this was gonna be more like a town hall. This was, at this point, since everybody's here, we didn't cancel the meeting. This was just gonna be more like, hey, give me your thoughts on the project. That was my understanding.
And that's my motion.
Okay, second still.
Okay. And Rock Hall.
Commissioner Vatici, Otis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
No.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Okay, we are now going to the public comments regarding the, regarding the Hayes Road second access. As a second access, that is not, according to the, according to the applicant, it's not going to happen. So I, with all due respect to you and to Mr. Armstrong, this is like, look here, but don't look here. I very much appreciate the fact that he cannot withdraw anything. I appreciate the fact that he would like to submit a new application. The matter of the fact is that you have an, and I'm not a lawyer, by the way, I'm not an attorney, but you have an active ordinance on which you should be voting tonight, where at least you should be listening to our points of view and vote on it, and get that ordinance out. We don't want Hayes Road to ever build, or at least I personally do not want Hayes Road to ever be built. Why are you not voting? Well, as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, Dr. Costa was very right. That was the point I wanted to make in the beginning. It sounds very nice what your attorney is recommending to you, but the matter of the fact is, as of this moment, there is nothing to withdraw. That ordinance is active and legal, and you have a legal responsibility to actually listen and vote on that matter. Because he's saying, I'm gonna submit another one, six months down the line, three months down the line, seven months down the line. Who knows? This is an active ordinance. You need to vote on it, and I'll reserve my time to speak about my other issues on the matter. But the fact of, the matter of the fact is, all this conversation and voting that you had, it is not addressing the fact, and the fact is, it's an active ordinance. It is currently on the books. This is hear-talk. The fact you received the letter that is saying that I will withdraw, it's mute.
Thank you.
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I'm a little confused because I've read all the legalese. I'm not a lawyer, but you guys were never supposed to do eminent domain. It was outside the district of Tarpon Springs. So I don't understand why the attorney even-
So I don't understand why the attorney even spoke about that the eminent domain would be used outside in Pinellas County.
It was not. It was part of the motion that eminent domain will not go and take place.
I understand that. That's within the Tarpon County, but not outside, and that's where the report wouldn't be needed. It was to take people's property or ask to take people's property in Pinellas County, not in Tarpon Springs. So I don't understand why that was even brought up here tonight. That was my comment. But it was outside your jurisdiction. So the fact whether you agreed to take eminent domain or not is irrelevant. That's what I want to say. I also have a letter that was written by Paul Robinson, if it was okay if I read that to you, because he wasn't able to be here, he's on the Sustainability Committee, and he gave me permission to read this. So it's, Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, the proposed development named above, which you will consider at a special meeting today, lies within the coastal high hazard area, by definition within slash category one. As you may recall, coastal zone element goal 30, protect human life, restrict public expeditions in areas subject to destruction by natural disasters and sea level rise. So this is a sustainability person. Restrict use of public expenditures in the coastal high area, hazard area, the following maintenance and purchase of public open space, drainage, elimination of existing septic systems. And I'll come right to the bottom where it says the dangers to property and to lives caused by irresponsible building within coastal high hazard areas was illustrated best by the devastation caused by Hurricane Harvey in the Houston area, where the Morgan Group is based in Houston, and they are of course not ignorant to these risks. I ask you to abide by the comprehensive plan. I also ask you not to put lives at danger, property, and not to be irresponsible in dangerous plans to move forward. I not only agree with everything he said, I've been up here numerous times before to speak exactly about following the comprehensive plan, and you haven't been following the comprehensive plan. There is a number of reasons why you can use that property, and none of them fall under these plan that you have. So if, what it has to do is it has to benefit the residents of this town, otherwise you should not be used, doing anything there. And that's all I have to say. I, I know you've made your decision, and we're going to be going through this again and again. I hope that all these good people come and come for the planning, the zoning, all the variances, and speak again. That's all I could say, because I, I feel bad and I apologize that they came here for almost for nothing tonight. Thank you.
Jackie Turner, 792 Chesapeake Drive. Thank you for allowing public comment representing, you know, letting people represent their thoughts. A lot of people took the time and energy to come out tonight because we don't have Zoom. As many people have stated tonight and will continue to state and have in the past, the project as a whole is very ill-advised and goes against the wishes of hundreds, if not thousands, of residents who've expressed through time and will continue to do so, express their serious concerns about the environmental and safety impacts of this development. We had hoped these concerns would be heard with genuine concern. I think many here feel that their disapproval fell on deaf ears, which is why they're here tonight. So now we're addressing the issue of access to this 400-unit development. That's what Hayes Road was about, was access to this development. So thankfully, that the county has stated that the cost of that, 200, 2 million, ill-advised, different environmental and safety and engineering concerns, the applicants pulled it. However, we still have another troubling alternative that was presented in the materials tonight, which is the addition of that second entry point on 19. So at the January 7th commission meeting, Joel Provenzano, who's with FDOT, he stated a second access on US 19 would not be advisable because, quote, "We could not control the vehicles the same way we could from a single access. It would increase the conflict points, thus increasing the potential for more crashes." Close quote. So then, next step, February and May, the Morgan Group's engineering consultants, they were working with FDOT staff on the potential, on this second access point on 19, which is north of the main entrance, again, an even shorter distance there to make that really tricky U-turn that's been talked about. So then, they've been talking about that, going through it. In June, FDOT then agreed that the proposed design with the second access meets the applicable requirements of the FDOT design standards, and a permit may be submitted for formal review. So what, what changed? Did traffic decrease on 19? And, I mean, I, I, I don't think it has. So, you know, we're still measuring things the same. Traffic is increasing only. I understand having this development could be a great economic impact, positive economic impact for our town, however, do we do that at the cost of the environmental and the safety concerns? So when the Morgan Group does come back and submit a new application, perhaps we then can make sure that we truly are listening and hearing the true concerns of the people, the ones sitting here today, the ones who've submitted emails, the ones who I hope will continue to be at the meetings, like Mr. Eisner had said, because they will continue, as they have in the past and will in the future and have today, clearly state their opposition to this development. So we want to protect the environment, we want to protect the safety of everyone traveling on 19. You know, if you do have these, this new development, we have, what, 400 to 800 people that will be living there. We want them to come in and out of that development safely. So let's make sure that that is represented. Thank you.
Next person, please. Do you have any other public comments?
My name is Frank A. Santa, resident of Sail Harbor Circle and founder of the Common Sense People's Coalition. I came here representing that part of it, but now that the Hayes Roads has been withdrawn, it seems to me that they can come back to life at some later point. Of course, they're saying they can't, but as a licensed contractor in Florida for over 40 years, I've seen some crazy stuff happen. So it would make me feel more comfortable if in fact.
Come on, we can do that.
I, I'm not even done with my, my good stuff. I'm wondering if it's possible to have the builder developer sign a letter of intent that he would never ask for an exemption for the Hayes Road project. I'd feel better about it. As far as the overall project, I came late to the game in complaining about it, but as, I've been living in Sail Harbor 32 years or so, the people there, small community, good people, but in essence, we are outside the scope of Pinellas County where we live versus the city, which actually intersects at our, our entranceway. So how long was it, just out of curiosity, was it before the lawyers have sent their letter of intent to withdraw? How long have you had that possession of that letter?
Two days.
Just two days? 48 hours? That's kind of a short notice to cancel a meeting, I get it. But I appreciate your time, but it makes common sense to me that any developer with deep pockets, politicians come and go like the wind. I would love to see a letter of intent from that developer saying that particular project would never ask for that exemption or for a permit to access that road. I think that makes common sense to me. But that aside, have a nice night.
Again, I will appreciate, this is not an entertainment session, this is very, very serious. Let's keep it that way, please. Come on. We can do that. Yes, sir.
Yes. Peter Ripa, 304 Mariner Drive. Didn't plan on coming up and speaking. I'd been to two meetings, been back for about two years now after leaving for 40. Come back here and see the, and I think the best thing I heard of the two meetings was the strategic plan that's coming forward for the city, because what I've seen is just symptomatic, whether it's the arch sign or Hayes Road, it just seems as though the direction and compass is amiss. And I would just say, listen, I respect the service of all the public servants, but as a leader, you embrace conflict, you have the courage to step into it and let the air out of the balloon, let the people speak tonight. Just to hear, until it finally went around the table for 15 minutes, to let the people speak and going forward, set that precedent to let the people speak is one that you as leaders, you may not hear anything that you're going to take to heart from the Hayes project or any of the other projects, but you know what? The people are being heard, and that's what they want to have, the opportunity to be heard. That's all I got.
Are there any other public comments?
Panayotis Cuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Anybody donating their time is simply just doing that, these are all my own thoughts and expressions. Annie Samarcus will be donating her time. Does anybody else want to donate two minutes? Lady over there.
You need to identify yourself, please. Thank you. And, okay. You've got eight minutes.
First, I just want, Jacob, you've got to let the people talk, we're here right now. Look at all these people.
Well, you're talking, right?
Right? Of course, Mayor, but let me go, stop. A lot of spin-ups, a lot of lying under oath, a lot of testimony, it's all in the transcripts right there. I'm tired of Morgan Group wasting the city's money researching, spending, we got Renee Vincent, she's got other things to worry about besides coming out of our pockets and spending an extra, what, the road was supposed to cost a million dollars, and now we're sitting at $2 million for this Hayes Road. And you didn't want us to discuss US 19, the second entrance, but you let all that information into the backup. So we're here to discuss it, we're here to let Morgan Group know this project ain't going to happen. You guys have already shot yourselves in the foot. You know, and Mr. Armstrong, don't blame the commission, blame yourself and your expertise and your land use stuff about how you guys didn't come here prepared tonight. You guys have been sneaking this stuff underneath us. You fought with the Walmart issue, and now here you are again. I mean, are you about money or are you about your Swiftman movement? You know, it's not this board's fault, so come prepared next time. Actually, not at all, because this ordinance seems to happen tonight, the evidence is there, it should have been done and over with. Here's the email from Cindy Terapani that was received July 13th, 2021 at 6:27 PM. "We have reviewed the Hayes Road study prepared by Cardinal, who, I'm really sick and tired of this engineering company, they've been with us too long, they know the network too much, we might have to start looking for a different engineering company if they don't know how to listen to the people of Tarpon Springs and not the good old boys. And I don't care if anybody comes up here and tries to defend their families, you know, Godmother can defend her godson, but a man must defend themselves." Okay? So, "Therefore, all four build alternatives are inconsistent with the direction given by the Board of Commissioners in the approval of the Anclaw Arbor Project." No, it's from the direction of your incompletion of being able to do your work and due diligence that has caused you this incident that you're here right now. So since we can't use, oh, and there's another reason why. I went and looked at Jasmine Avenue, I went to the Sail Harbor Roundabout today, there's two brand-new houses right on Hayes Road. You can't open the road up, you're going to take their property, just like Mr. Donovan said, so Cindy Terapani didn't want to mention that. Here, we got this new, here's the map, I made 20 copies, FDOT second entrance, we brought it up here just to show people, I mean, this is their planning, this is their planning, Mayor, look, look at this north entrance. If you're coming from the north, you can't enter the north or south entrance because there's no turning lane directly leading to both entrances. You have to use the proposed southbound turning lane to make a U-turn to switch four lanes in less than 200 feet to enter the south entrance. One turning lane from the north, and you made this north entrance, but you, you have to come from the south, you're going to pass the south entrance just to exit, just to enter the north entrance. And I didn't see any commercial drive, CDL, commercial trucks, 53-footers, anything tried to do that U-turn. What about the school buses? What about utility vehicles coming to service the apartments? So many issues with this baloney second entrance that the application stops. There's nothing they can do. There's no spin-up. If they want to force Ms. Renee to come up and spin up opinions and put Mark Lacorice in a tough spot again, it's going to happen, because there's no way around it. It's right there in black and white in the testimony. That Jackie Turner read, I'm going to read it again, just to know that, Mr. Armstrong, you guys can't do nothing, it's done. You know, what about entering, exiting the north entrance? Leaving the neighborhood, you have to go north all the way across the bridge to go into Pasco County and take a U-turn thousands of feet away just to head back south. So this second entrance is just a complete joke, it's a waste of our time, it's a waste of the, you know, the city's money, expenses, resources. We're coming out of our pocket to connect for who? For Morgan Group, for some special interest people in town? They say they're going to, oh, the tax revenue, $4 million can bring in tax revenues. That's, it's a joke. It's a joke. You know, I mean, these plans look so shady, it's embarrassing. Experts credible in their respective fields present this diagram, half thought out to create safety and long-term traffic issues. And remember the drone footage? I asked, hey, what's going on? You guys talking about these traffic studies, do we have any drone footage? Our own city staff wanted to sell us out, because after I requested it, guess what? They put a drone up in the air. And then two days before the second reading, they presented it again, and guess what they did? They took a pic, they took the video of going north into Pasco County from 7:50 AM to about 8:30 AM. We know, ain't no one going to Pasco County in the morning. Everybody's coming south. You know, they didn't want to show the evening hours, they didn't want to show an hour or two, you know, a week's worth of busy time, and guess what? We're still in COVID protocol, we still got people scared to move around, we got a whole new condo units that's right off of Jasmine, that's not even filled yet. So we're done with all that. Our city staff, if they're going to sell us out, they're going to be gone fast. I mean, come prepared for your own stuff. And let's just end it right where we need to end it, because this is where it is, just like I'm going to repeat what Jackie Turner set up here, it's right in the testimony, January 7th, 2021. Mr. Provenzano states, "An option for a second access on US 19 would not be advisable because we could not control the vehicles the same way we could from a single access. It would increase the conflict points, thus increasing the potential for more crashes." So what is this?
This way, please.
What is this? What is this, Mayor? It's done. This Morgan Group plan, it's over with. It's over with. Maybe Townsend can come up and say, hey, let's have a referendum on it. You know, just like he did West Colston, I'm all for it, I just don't like fake acts. Please. So this ends today, try to file your application, ain't going to happen, you guys already shot yourselves in the foot with your testimony. I appreciate you guys trying to ruin Tarpon Springs, it's not going to happen, and I think once we citizens get this place, we should just call it Citizens Park. Doesn't matter if you were 20 years ago fighting for it or fighting for it now. Each and every one of you citizens deserve it, and that's what we're going to do.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Bernbaum, 330 Promenade Dunedin. So you wonder why someone from Dunedin is up here in Tarpon Springs, in your neck of the woods, speaking at this meeting? And the reason I'm here is, I love Pinellas County. I love the people of Pinellas County. I want a future for the people and citizens of this county, and a sustainable future. I don't know, we all watch the news, and we've seen that, what, 600 tons of dead fish have been pulled from Tampa Bay this week. Our beaches. Our beaches are littered with dead fish. They're closed because of red tide. Tarpon Springs brings income into its community by serving vacationers. And what is their, what are they enjoying here? Dead fish, closed beaches. Picture the future. If we pave and develop every little part of this county, why would you want to be here? No birds, no fish to catch, no beaches to bathe on, no trees to sit under? So, what am I asking? I'm asking you to think about how all that 600 tons of dead fish ended up in Tampa Bay. It was at the end of a chain of mistakes. Decisions made by councils, by commissions, by representatives at local, municipal, and state levels. A decision that you think is a small decision, that's just a blip on the radar, is actually part of a chain of many choices and decisions. And we cannot foresee the impact of those decisions. And I have to remind you that once Anclot is bulldozed and paved, it's gone. To create the soils that are unique to a lot of the areas here, it takes hundreds and hundreds of years. You can't just go back and replant all that. You can't bring back the fish and the birds. So, I'm begging you and asking you, as someone said earlier, to be a hero. Think about the long-term consequences of what even you may say is just a small decision. Oh, a few hundred houses, few more people. You know, what difference does it make? Ask the people who were in charge of Pointy Pint all these years and every little decision made along that way. Ask, well, you can't really ask them because they're dead, the hundreds of manatees that are starving. People in this state even wanted to take them off the endangered list just a year or two ago. So, I just beg of you to step back. I know development means money, and I know money is important. Okay? I'm not going to be naive about that. But I'm asking you to step forward and represent your wonderful citizens that came out tonight and who are going to keep coming out and keep demanding of you to fulfill your obligations to them. And I ask you to look inside here and think about what you leave your community. Do you want a sustainable, vibrant, lively community? Or do you want a parking lot full of high-rise buildings and pavement? And I'll be honest with you, if I were a tourist, that's not why I'd come here to visit. So, I'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and I'd like you to consider what I had to say this evening. Thank you.
Mark Marshburn, 124 East Lake Drive in Tarpon Springs. Just wanted to say a couple of things. I'm also the president of Save Tarpon Springs Organization. This property was supposed to be a park, we know that. And there's one important thing about a park, and that is you only need a single entrance. If you look at Sunset or Fred Howard or Anderson or Chestnut Senior Park, they all have a single ingress and egress point. There's no need. The traffic patterns are completely different. Maybe they're a little busier on weekends, but on weekends, you're not dealing with rush hour. So, it would be the absolutely perfect way to solve the traffic problem. The second thing, the last speaker was absolutely right. Six, 700 cars, 400-plus apartments. The amount of nutrient load from the runoff from the parking lot and from all of the landscape plants, which will obviously be hit with plenty of nutrients and fertilizer, is going to go right into the Anclot River. And as a, working in the sea sponge industry, I don't know if you know this, but the last red tide breakout we had a few years ago wiped out all of the Hudson Grass variety, which are locally grown sponges. And also related to them are the vase sponges. The vase sponges are sliding, starting to come back. But back in the day, we used to get hundreds of nets of vase sponges every year. And the last several years after that red tide outbreak, they have gone south. And the sizes are now just teeny-tiny, and the quality is just awful. So, this property being developed like that will certainly increase the nutrient load and increase the chances of red tide outbreaks. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Dan Roth. I live at 778 North Lake Boulevard. Kind of like to ask a question of why you were going to approve the Hayes Road project to begin with. I don't know if you've ever driven up and down Jasmine very much. If you go by the sports complex, there's no sidewalks over there. People push baby buggies down there. There's a lot of traffic when there's sports going on at the complex. When they put the Spruce Street through, it kind of made Jasmine as a, like an alternate 19. It's heavily cut through now. I have pictures to prove it in my pocket of the traffic that's backed up there now. There's, it's morning, night. And it just, it, to bring that amount of traffic from a pretty good-sized subdivision, way bigger than the one I live in, plus Lindiaco subdivision isn't completed yet either, which also poses another problem at the corner because Lindiaco's project was approved so close to Jasmine. All that separates it from Jasmine is a sidewalk. We live in North Lake. I live on a corner. We had to have a sightline put in when North Lake was put in in order to, for vehicles to see turning around a corner. That didn't happen at Lindiaco's project. Spruce Street was not there at the time, but the plans were there to put Spruce Street in. They also have that designated from one way as a no trucks. Well, the no truck sign going down there is about a block and a half in past Flammer Ford. So, trucks go down there all the time, in and out, buses, semis. I get plenty of pictures to show that. To create another 400 and some-plus apartments with, you know, possibly another 800 vehicles or something in and out every day. And they even considered that originally to go down Jasmine, cut through by Sail Harbor, come down Jasmine, down that road, which was originally more or less kind of a little country road out there. This is, to me, was a little not thought through very well as far as the planning and zoning or wherever you guys started with it. You know, the Jasmine at the south end is deplorable, to say the least. I've lived there for 20 years. They've patched it, patched it, patched it. It's a terrible road. It was, the Jasmine was paved behind our house years ago. The only reason it was done is because the Pinellas Trail was put through. But when you go north of North Lake, it's still original down there. And I just don't believe, I'm a contractor. I'm not a road contractor, but I believe that that road was not designed for that type of traffic to go through there. And I'm quite surprised that the commissions or the planning, zoning would even approve that in the first place. And that's about all I got to say about it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Natalie Monroe. I live in 1427 Sail Harbor. And I just want to make a comment. Why, why the project in first place? In the name of progress? Killing animals? Killing trees? Cleaning, killing all the nature that is around there? Is that progress? Is that where you stand for it, all of you? Because for me, it's not progress. It's killing, killing what is the future for our children. I live, if this construction goes ahead, my front yard, it will be the buildings. And it's true, Spruce Street, since it was open, the traffic is terrible. It's terrible, terrible, terrible. So, while we keep adding this, again, is this progress? I think it's not. I would say that the Morgan Company should look for all the buildings that are closing down now. There's plazas all over the place, malls all over the place that are closing down. Pick up one of them. Do the building constructions and whatever you want to do. It's already rose and already built up. There's concrete, there's no trees, there's no animals. So, I think, I think this board, I don't want to be offending any of you, but it's ludicrous, the lack of awareness of what is happening in, right now. Not only with the weather racing, all the ecological problems that everywhere. And yes, this is Florida. People here comes for enjoying all of this, and you guys are killing it, are killing it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Roth. I'd like to piggyback off of my husband's comment. I'm at 778 North Lake regarding the street on Jasmine. I'm very glad that you bought that extra property for the cemetery because you're going to need it eventually. Because if you don't do something with that sports complex and sidewalks, you're going to need a lot more spaces than you bought. Thank you very much.
Next person, please.
Tim Cofolles, 205 Leafwood Road, Tarpon. First of all, I want to apologize to my wife. She asked me not to speak anymore because I get too involved. But anyway, I recall many years ago, the city put the treatment plant down at the mouth of the river where it's at now across the street. And the idea was that any water, you know, the reclaimed water would go out. Now, fortunately, we're using most of it, is my understanding. But we would never think of doing that now. We would never endanger the mouth of the river by building another treatment plant there, I don't think. It was put there for that reason. In fact, I was informed of that back when I filed a lawsuit against the city back in the 80s. And John Terrapini came to me and said, you know, that, that water shouldn't even be used for reclaim. We, that got to be part of the issue. That being said, years from now, someone's going to look at that property and say, how in God's name did they build these apartments there? They're going to look at that and say, why didn't somebody stop it? Why didn't some commission come forward? What we heard tonight from the applicant is that they must need two entrances, apparently, and they can't get two entrances. Why was this not all determined before approvals, et cetera? I also want to add before I close that parts of Pasco County have put a moratorium on apartments because they have too many. And I think that's something that we need to consider, that maybe we're just getting over-inundated with apartments. And maybe that's part of, if we had people that were sitting here saying, we can't find places to live, we better build apartments, then I think that would be a different story, but I think a different location would be in order. I think years from now, someone's going to look back at that property and say, how didn't in God's name did somebody build these horrible apartments? Or whether they're beautiful or what, on this property and destroy the ecosystem of this, of this whole river? Thank you.
Next person, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kim Begay, and I'm the vice president and the conservation advocate with the Clearwater Audubon Society. And I am just here to speak on behalf of the habitat and the birds. I was just wondering, have any of you ever seen a reddish egret? If you haven't seen one, it's the rarest wading bird in North America. And believe it or not, they love to forage along the coastal tidal flood habitat of the Anclot River. And I have a lot of photographs of them doing that. So, we have the rarest wading bird in North America utilizing the shore of the Anclot River. That's really significant. That bird has a lot of legal protections. I'm pretty sure that's one bird that you would not want to disrupt the foraging habitat, which is protected by federal law, as well as the nesting habitat. And definitely, they forage there. I did write a letter, but I'd like to go ahead and just read it quickly, and then I want to get into some other issues. So, here's my letter. Dear Tarpon Springs elected officials, I'm writing this letter to you all on behalf of Clearwater Audubon Society as the conservation advocate and vice president of our chapter. I am basically an extension of Audubon, Florida. I'm also here speaking on behalf of the Pinellas Conservation Coalition. I'm deeply concerned about the proposed development of the apartment complex along the Anclot River, which would require destruction of incredibly important and ever-shrinking wetland habitat in Pinellas County. So many wetlands have been developed that it is now reaching a crisis point. As the governing elected body of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and the entity that has the final say-so of the Anclot River habitat, it is solely in your hands whether to approve or disapprove the development of these incredible lands diverse with wildlife, birds, and old growth pine and other trees. Habitat like this should be preserved as a treasure for future generations, not to be given to developers to do as they please. The developers can find other areas to build cookie-cutter apartments, but this habitat can never, ever be replaced. The citizens of Tarpon Springs have elected you to make decisions on these very sensitive issues because they trusted you and that you would all do the right thing when it comes to situations such as this. They trust you to protect these amazing lands along the pristine Anclot River wetland habitat that is scarce and incredibly important. I'm imploring you to please preserve the entire 74-acre Anclot ecosystem that is adjacent to Pinellas County's Anclot Lands Management Area. Now, I wanted, there's more to my letter, but I wanted to just talk about the species that might be impacted by this development. We have the rufa rednott. The rufa rednott has one of the longest migrations of any bird on the planet Earth. He migrates 11,000 miles round trip. That is one heck of a migration. This is an incredible living creature that needs this habitat. This is not like, oh, it's a bird, you know, forget about it. This is an incredible bird that needs to be protected. It needs every piece of habitat it can get to continue to survive because we have so much development along coastal wetlands that they're running out of room to live. And when you run out of room to live, you became endangered, and then you become almost extinct. They predict that the rufa rednott will be extinct within the next 25 years. We cannot let this kind of thing happening by continuing to take away the habitat that they need to survive. The other species that might be impacted by this project are the American kestrel, which is a small falcon. It's like a small peregrine falcon. We have the American oyster catcher, bald eagle, obviously. The eagles nest there on this property. The black skimmer, clapper rail. Most people have never even seen a clapper rail. They're very shy. Common ground dove.
Thank you, Mayor. The time has expired.
I think she would like to donate her minutes.
Your name, please? Two more minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have the king rail, least turn, lesser yellow legs, limpkin, magnificent for gatebird, prairie warbler, pathontery warbler, red-headed woodpecker, reddish egret, ruddy turnstone, semi-palmeded sandpiper, short-billed dowager, short-tailed hawk, which are becoming incredibly rare. Swallow-tailed kite, they migrate here from South America. They nest in Florida. They need all of the habitat they can get. Their numbers are declining. The wimbril, willet, wilson's plover, yellow warbler, and there are so many more. There are so, all of these birds, you can count each species as an additional reason to save this land and not let it be developed. It's very, very important. And Ms. Kelly Levy, who is a brilliant woman and the director of Public Works, who I've worked with a lot on environmental matters, stated in her analysis of this project that the county, number 17, she says, avoidance of flood losses, loss of use, property damage, buildings, vehicle, other property located below flood elevation, infrastructure level of service, e.g., roads, sidewalks, stormwater, sanitary system and infrastructure damage, and its negative impact on people, is the first line of defense and floodplain management best practice. Per Florida statutes 163.3178, it is the intent of the legislature that local government comprehensive plans, that would be your plan, restrict development where such activities would damage or destroy coastal resources, and that such plans protect human life and limit public expenditures in areas that are subject to destruction by natural disaster. So, there you go. Kelly Levy stated flat-out that the county does not agree with this kind of development and that the local city governments should be following the comprehensive... and that the local city governments should be following the comprehensive plans to limit destruction of coastal areas, which harms animals and people.
Thank you.
Do I have any time left? Because I want to keep going.
No, you, time has expired.
Oh, okay, can someone donate? Okay, great. Great, thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry, I did not hear who that was.
The person who donated the time. Who donated the time? It needs to be identified. Thank you. Thanks. No, you got four more minutes.
Four? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, so back to my letter. These 74 acres in Tarpon Springs along the Anclot River leading to the Gulf of Mexico are home to endangered species, gopher tortoises, shorebirds, threatened tricolored herons, which are state listed threatened species, endangered native plant species. Isn't that reason enough to let the developers seek land to develop elsewhere? It is not imperative that they develop these specific lands. There are other areas they can develop that are not so environmentally significant and important. Think about it. They do not have the right to come in and destroy critical wetland habitat. And really, it is your job to protect it as elected officials. People have placed their faith and trust in you, and they are depending on you to fully analyze how every species is going to be impacted. It's your job. Shorebird populations are drastically declining due to undisturbed nesting, lack of undisturbed nesting and foraging sites. This area is a place where shorebirds, birds of prey, songbirds, piliated woodpeckers, bob white quail, et cetera, can utilize as a safe area to have their chicks and raise their young. I personally have rescued killdeer chicks from the shores of the Anclot River in this area. These are shorebirds that nest directly on the sand along the shores of the Anclot River. This habitat is really important, that it's not disturbed. Because they nest on the ground, any human disturbance is going to jeopardize their reproductive cycle. Please do not take this space away that they can use as a safe habitat to nest. Our request is to ask the city of Tarpon Springs to allow the citizens to raise funds and apply for grants for Tarpon Springs to purchase the acreage for conservation and parkland for the enjoyment of future generations. People should be able to visit, stroll through, enjoy, exercise, kayak alongside the entire 74 acres. We do not want the pristine environmentally sensitive land to be destroyed, clear cut, filled, paved over, or built upon. Please dig deep within and think about what is proposed to be built in this precious space. The apartments can be built elsewhere. This habitat can never be replaced. The myriad species of wildlife, and especially the birds, can never get these old growth trees that take decades to grow back. Songbird populations are plummeting due to lack of appropriate nesting sites like old growth pines. This parcel provides all of this. It is basically priceless. Please do not give it up to developers. I also wanted to mention another species that's impacted, which is the eastern indigo snake. That snake has been wiped out in so many areas, and this is a habitat where it is thriving. That's another species that really needs to be protected. Also, I would like to address the nutrient runoff, which another person had mentioned. When you build these apartments, you're going to have lawn services, you're going to have people fertilizing, using pesticide, using herbicides. It's all going to be running into the Anclot River when it rains, and it's going to be affecting the water quality in a very negative fashion. It will be affecting the manatees and the grasses that the manatees eat. If you have poor water quality, you have less vegetation for the manatees. The manatees are already in serious trouble this year. Let's not add to the problem when they have a beautiful pristine Anclot River to feed in right now. Let's keep it clean. There are so many reasons that this project should not go forward. I've listed a lot of them, but there are many more. I don't want to hog all the time from other people, so I'm going to just wrap it up here. But I think you get the idea. It's your job as publicly elected.
Thank you very much.
Officials to do your job and make sure that you protect the environment and don't cause any harm to the people.
Thank you.
And a floodplain. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Carl Waggonfore, 98 South Highland Avenue. I suspect you all have probably reviewed this material already, but for the benefits of my fellow citizens, I wanted to expose to them the request that the city of Tarpon Springs made to Pinellas County for a review of the Hayes Road construction proposal. I was amazed that they were able to turn this around on such short notice. But I did talk today with a gentleman named Brent Hall, who is a member of the Pinellas County Public Works Organization. I questioned him. I thought that perhaps you might have extended to him the courtesy of inviting him to this meeting so that you could hear directly from him and also be able to question him on some of the content of this letter that he wrote regarding Hayes Road. But I was disappointed to find that he was not invited, or the organization was not invited. The observations that Pinellas County made in this, in my opinion, went far beyond simply reviewing the Hayes Road proposal. For example, they responded with 17 points that they had issues with regarding the proposal. Number 16, they stated the proposed project area and proposed road are currently highly vulnerable to flooding and storm surge, not just the road, the entire project area. Sea level rise projections also indicate significant impact from blue sky flooding and increased storm surge in this area. The proposed project site and road are also entirely located within the current conditions 25-year coastal floodplain, and portions of the proposed site will be inundated with a king tide in 2040. Item number 17, they described avoidance of flood losses, loss of use, property damage, buildings, vehicle, other property, infrastructure level of service, roads, sidewalks, and stormwater sanitary systems, and infrastructure damage, and its negative impact on people is the first line of defense and floodplain management best practice. Per Florida statutes 163.3178, it is the intent of the legislature that local government comprehensive plans restrict development applications, activities, where such activities would damage or destroy coastal resources, and that such plans protect human life and limit public expenditures in areas that are subject to destruction by natural disaster. The conclusion paragraph written by Kelly Hammer Levy, this is a preliminary courtesy review utilizing the information provided. Based on the identified impacts and the recommended options inability to meet most of the design criteria, the no-build alternative should be given more consideration. That's the end of her comments. And I would add to that, the no-build alternative should be given very careful consideration for the entire project. Thanks for your time.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. So you received an email from Cindy Terrapani. It's already demonstrated on the 7th that she testified under oath and lied under oath. I showed you that. I was also under oath, saying that everybody knew that Peter Dylaxus had taken Bob Guido to the city manager's office. The guy was ready to cut a check to make it a park. Everybody knew it, she knew it, y'all knew it. Didn't happen, though, did it? So you're going to take her word on that email that they're not going to do the Hayes Road in Armstrong? Are you kidding me? You're going to take his word? No, you got to get this stuff in writing. What are you doing? You guys need to vacate this order, send them packing, end this thing. You need to put it on the agenda to kill that project that they're walking away from, maybe. Kill it, get rid of it. Don't wait around for them to put another proposal, get it off the books. We don't need to waste our time here or our money. This thing's not going to get built either way. 15 years or so it took you guys to realize that about Walmart. I mean, come on. We're not going anywhere, we live here. We're going to stop this thing. Every single aspect will be challenged in court. They will be bankrupt, and Armstrong will be the richest attorney in the world. If Walmart's pockets weren't deep enough, you think the Morgan's groups are, they will figure that out soon. They're already backpedaling. And as everybody already told you, and you already know, the only thing you can put in there is a park, because one entrance, in and out, it's the only thing that will fit. If you put two, you just increase conflict points. It's a death trap for people on 19. If you have one, it's a death trap for the people inside. If both of those entrances are on US 19 North, it's a death trap for people inside. If something happens to block those entrances, how the cops and the fire department supposed to get in there and save people? They're only going to be a few feet apart, and there's a bridge there. You're going to kill people. Think about what you're saying and doing. The mayor obviously doesn't care. Walks out in the middle. All he had to do was say he needed to take a break, and we all could have took a break. Everybody needs to go. I need to go to the restroom, too. But you know what? I held it. You know why? Because this had to be said. And it's not too late to become a hero, just like they say. You can flip this thing around, be a champion of the people, knock this stench off of you, fix this thing, kill this project, send them packing back to Texas. Or let them come here and redevelop, just like other people have said. There are lots of dilapidated properties here that could be fixed, and we would welcome them here with open arms. Buy them a beer. You kidding me? You get all this paved land that's just crumbling, all these properties that could be fixed up? Put their project there. You can't put it in where the river is, it's impossible. And if FDOT, if somehow their arms are long enough to twist their hands, we'll beat them in court. There's always someplace they can't reach. Thank God for the United States of America and our system. And our system will prevail. And everyone here will be held accountable if you don't do the right thing. Because it's so easy to do the right thing and save all these people their time and energy. Let them go back to their lives. You could fix this, sir. You could fix it. Just kill this project, kill the ordinance, and then if they bring a new proposal, just deny it. Thank you.
Anita Protas, 901 Bayshore Drive. I've been debating whether to say this or not. Everyone's talking about Walmart on that property, the development now, but no one mentions ABR, that wanted to build the big insurance complex there and the big offices that Mr. Vati Kodes, when he was city manager, worked hard to get it there. And then when they bought the building in St. Pete, they moved over where the electric company used to be. And he worked for them. So what's good for one is good for the other. I'm sitting back there hearing all these remarks, and they're not true. The innuendos are terrible, and I don't have to do anybody's dirty work. And that came from an inner circle of one of the campaigns, because it's been asked, they've asked me about it three times. I don't do anybody's dirty work. I do my own. And I've proven myself, and I don't have to take that crap. And that's what it is. So let's talk about ABR that you were head of getting into Tarpon, and it took more land than what this is. You have a responsibility, yes, for environment and the water. We have to see what they're going to do with infrastructure. Walmart had a very, very good infrastructure at that time, state of the art. Let's see what these people are going to do. I would rather have apartments than houses there. And let me tell you, you are responsible for the future of Tarpon Springs. Sometimes it's wise to take what you can get better now, because you're not going to be here 10 and 20 years down the road to see what's happening. So Commissioner Vati Kodes, mention about ABR.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Anna Keen. I live on Boyer Street here in Tarpon Springs. Now, I was here when we came in and we fought about Walmart. You people weren't up there then. And I swore the next time that I voted, I would make sure they didn't get back in again. You asked us to vote for you because you care about the city. Well, then care about the city, care about the residents, not just the people, but the animals. At my house, I live across from Publix. I have fox, I have armadillos, I have possums. I've had the tortoise at my house. I'm not out in the sticks because these animals have nowhere to go. And I realize that you really don't care about the animals, but how about caring about the people that you're up here to represent? How about looking out for us? You say, oh, well, we're going to have more meetings, you can come to the other meetings. Really? Well, not everybody has the time. We're not getting paid to be here. We're here because we love our city, and we love the people that live here. And by God, you should, too. What about caring about the First Amendment? Oh, well, you shouldn't talk, you shouldn't talk. Really? It's all right for you to talk, but it's not for the people that are here? I don't think anybody sitting here is paid. Everybody's here because they care about this city. And by God, you should, too. I guarantee you, there's a lot of seats that are up for vote, and I will make sure that I don't have any of you in again that have voted against us. There is no reason for that place to go in over there. I was here till 6:30 in the morning for the Walmart fight, because you figured you'd shut us down, and you'd run the meeting so late that we'd go home. But by God, I was here till 6:30 so I could get my voice heard. Now, I don't have a lot of money, and I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a doctor, and I'm not some big shot. I'm a resident. And they're talking about, well, you guys be heroes and back away from this thing. Don't be heroes, just be decent human beings. Be American citizens that love your country, that love your city.
Can you please lower your voice down a little bit?
I'm sorry. I'm very passionate about this.
I know you're patient.
And I don't find this funny at all. I know you thought you didn't like when people clap.
We're all here because we wanted to serve, please.
And you didn't like when people clap, and you didn't like when people laughed.
No, no.
And I understand that, because you said this is serious. Well, yes, it is serious.
Yes.
It is. It's very serious to every person sitting here, for whatever reason they came tonight. And we have a right to be heard.
Of course you will.
Yes, and I'm glad that you're acknowledging that.
Yes.
But understand where we are coming from.
We just want to have the voice a little bit down, we can hear it.
We, understand where we are coming from.
Yes.
My subdivision, there's only two ways in, 19 and Tarpon Avenue. Do you want to know how many times fire trucks have to come through my subdivision because they can't get through because there's an accident on 19? And yet you want to put hundreds of more people and hundreds of more cars there? What, for more people to be killed? And don't think that they won't? And that's right, rock back and forth in your chair, because you don't really care what I have to say. I get that.
That's not true.
I get that. Yeah, oh, yeah. I get that you don't care. Yeah, well, you can say you do, but you don't. Because obviously, if you did, we wouldn't be having this meeting tonight, because this would have never come about. Because my understanding was, when the Walmart deal went away, that was it. Why did Tarpon not buy that property and put a park in there? Why did the county not go ahead and buy that property and put a park in there? Does anybody have an answer for me? I mean, you're all people that are in government, you're all people that are all in the know. We had money to buy a piece of property down there when a building got torn down, but we don't have money to do that, which the residents would enjoy. You don't even know what you're going to do with that piece of property that's downtown. You just bought it. There's property there that the people that live here could enjoy, and I know my four minutes is up. And I thank you for that. And I thank all these people that took the time.
Thank you very much.
To come here. God bless all of you. God bless all of you.
No, please do not clap. Mr. Cuillas, don't start that. Okay? You run your office, I should respect that. The least you can do. Thank you.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. Before I begin, I have time donated from Ms. Kitka and also time donated from Ms. Dabs. I have a total of eight minutes. Thank you.
Do they agree with that? Ms. Dabs, do you agree with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Eight minutes, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And while I have a moment before I go into some other stuff, Ms. Dabs has been before you about putting a museum on the property the city foreclosed on in Union Academy. And you talk about historic issues and things of that nature. We need to see something on the agenda for that item to be discussed as an option. Thank you. Now, a number of people have already kind of addressed what's in the backup that we won't be presented on. And thank you for those who've highlighted some of the things from Pinellas County. But number 16 says, "The proposed project area and proposed road are currently highly vulnerable flooding and storm surge. Proposed project site and road are also entirely within the current conditions, 25-year coastal plain, blah, blah, blah." And then later on, it talks about code CFR 44. Requires communities to consider human safety diversion development areas safe from flooding, adverse effects of plum played development on existing development coordination plans in neighborhood and communities. And as Mr. Robinson had stated in his letter, that was read into the record by someone else because he was not able to be in attendance. And even in the documents you got from Pinellas County, this is a coastal high hazard area. But since that's been covered, I got something more important to go about. And this is what the subterfuge comes about. And God bless you, Ed and Mr. Trask, but they're giving you lawyers speak here. All right? Now, I'm going to point that out. It's been referenced, ordinance 2020-34. Thankfully, it's in the backup, so I can pull it out and reference a few options and aspects in it. First, you know, if you're not seeing one, you can go online and look at it. It says preliminary plan development with following design requirements. And they go through a whole bunch of them. And basically, it does state that, where is that line? It's been approved following the subject requirements. Now, one of the requirements was the determination of the feasibility of Hayes Road, which is what, in a sense, the voting was supposed to be about. Now, important paragraph is paragraph 22 because that's got all the ins and outs. And in it, it says, "Should the city elect to build Hayes Road, blah, blah, blah." And then it goes into some money. But here's the part. "The city agrees to notify the applicant in writing of its decision to build or not build Hayes Road within 90 days of final plan development approval." So the city has to tell Morgan Group, we're not going to approve the building of that road within 90 days of final development. Well, that's the end date. That does not stop you from being able to say right now, to have a motion and vote. The city commission at this point is not approving the feasibility of Hayes Road. But however, let's go on in the paragraph. "City will not use eminent domain for the Anclot Harbor project," which Conover put out. But that's only city property. So as Mr. Eisner tried to point out, anything beyond city line, county line, they can do eminent domain and do that road. So let me go a little further. "Should the city of Tarpon Springs or Pinellas County determine that it is unfeasible or undesirable to connect Hayes Road project, Hayes Road and any man, the applicant shall provide an emergency only access connection to US 19, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The applicant shall provide evidence of F dot approval of the US IT emergency access, provide et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." So here's the point. As it's been expressed, this is an active ordinance. You do have the power to repeal it. It will take two meetings. You can't do it tonight. You have to put it out as a public hearing, right Irene? Yes, I agree, I think so. I'm sure Mr. Trask can say, "A public meeting because you're getting rid of an ordinance." Two readings. Get rid of the ordinance. It kills this project. Because otherwise, if you're just relying on a road, he's saying he's not going to build Hayes Road. Well, that's fine. It doesn't mean he doesn't have approval to do any of this other stuff. And we can hear that, oh, we're going to F dot for approval of a secondary access. Technically, they can turn around, turn in a final development plan with an emergency access, which is already proved in this. And we got that project. So it's incumbent on you, one, to vote tonight, to officially put it in the record. You are against building Hayes Road. And secondly, a motion to bring forward ordinance 20-2020-34 for its repeal in its entirety. And don't be afraid of spending the advertising costs to do it, which is part of the reason you got bought bullied by Mr. Trask to say, to do the ordinance of the repeal the ordinance rules and procedure and then come back in with a resolution that you can change on any agenda meeting going forward. Because it only takes one vote and it doesn't have to be advertised as an ordinance. And why were you told that? Well, you save some advertising costs. We put them in as an ordinance to make sure they're followed and not changed every time there's a whim of some board members who want to change those rules. And as I've explained before, you want to cut out donations of time. All right, so I got three people to go with me. That's two minutes times three, that's six minutes for my four, that's 10. If each one of those come up, that's 16 minutes, four times four. And you say you want to shorten the meetings. I don't know. I don't know. You've got the ability to do what's right. As Costas was trying to explain, but you didn't get the facts. And they did honestly say what they did, but their part, yeah, 90 days. Well, that's the end line. You can let them know now. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Do we have any other public comments? Please go to the podium.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Charles. I live at 172 Coquenaux Bay Drive in St. Petersburg, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club Executive Committee. The Sierra Club Executive Committee certainly is not in favor of this project going through. And we've worked with many properties recently to save the 5% of unbuilt land that we have left in Pinellas County. So Pinellas County is the most built-out county in all of the state of Florida. And that's nothing to be proud of. We've got 5% eight, or 5% land that's not developed. And I, when I think about what it takes to raise a family, and I've been a school principal for a long, long time, and what families do. They do not go and sit in front of hotels or apartment buildings and look at them. They try to get their kids out in nature. And everybody's is healed and healthier when they're in nature. So this decision, this 74 acres, that's a lot of land in Tarpon Springs. So that land could either be, you could either choose it to be an apartment building, which it matters nothing when you already have 95% of the land developed. And that would be a moral failing on this board. Or it could be a legacy decision for this board. A legacy decision saying, "We had the courage, the foresight, and the love of the families of Tarpon Springs to give them this land for recreation. The decision is yours, but the Suncoast Sierra Club Executive Committee is against this 100%."
Are there any other public comments?
My name is Cindy Hulis. I live at 756 Low Quat Drive in Tarpon Springs. Thank you for the privilege to speak before you this evening. Thank you for your service. I just heard about this meeting today. I did not think that I would say anything, but I feel that I must. There are a few words that are going through my mind, my heart, right now. I drove into this town, May 18, 1973. I lived in Largo at that time. I drove down Tarpon Avenue, just past the Methodist Church, going west. And I said to my friends in the front seat, "Where did this little town come from? This is a gem." I had no idea. No idea that this priceless little village was here. I had driven north and south up to a Maneri Development. At that time, I lived in Indian Rocks Beach. I don't know why I drove. I could, I could drive back and forth to work. I didn't have any idea about this town. I fell in love with the city of Tarpon Springs hours before I met the man I love. I always tell him that. I fell in love with your city first. And actually, it became his city because he's an immigrant. He's Greek. A beautiful man. We have a beautiful family. We make a lot of messy mistakes. We love this town, this city, the people. When I had opportunity to serve families working for a federally funded and state-funded program that had the privilege of going into homes and working with families so that they could possibly have what they want in life, I said, "I gotta, I gotta work in Tarpon. I gotta, I gotta work on my turf. I love that town. This is my city." I have lived at the corner of Low Quat Drive and West Bayshore Drive since December 1977. We bought our first home. We had the woods across the street. We refer to the woods as the Winnie the Pooh Woods. My children, my nieces, the kids in the neighborhood, they all grew up there. I don't know specifically, you know, the acreage. Anita, you know the acreage. You live at the top of the hill. She lives at 14 feet above sea level. I live flood zone. There was a development. The words that are going through my mind and my heart right now is, "Please stop and think." There's not enough thinking going on, it seems like, in the world today. We got to think for ourselves and we've got to think for ourselves as a city. Our city. Where we want our children and our grandchildren and our next generations to go up. And I'm probably running out of time. All I want to say, there are things that are priceless and once they're gone, they're gone. I could not, we were not informed about, I live in Phase One Bayshore Heights. It's no longer acknowledged as such because we're kind of like the onion in the rose patch. We have this new subdivision, it's beautiful. I have friends who've driven by, come by to visit. They had no idea the subdivision was there. A word that is going through my heart and my mind right now, I'm sorry.
Ms. Hulis, your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you, ma. Do we have any other public comments? The gentleman that was serving on a plane in the zone, do you want to speak, sir? Do you want to speak?
It's very thoughtful of you to think to me, but I think that would be inappropriate since.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we are now going to the commission comments. Oh, I thought.
Hi, my name's Dory.
I thought I asked.
Okay. My name's Dory Larson. I live at 1846 Lexington Place in Tarpon. I have obviously a ton of hours and heart poured into, to this piece of property. My son will be 16 next month. And I was very early pregnant when this all started going down as the Walmart property. So as, you know, former president of Concerned Citizens of Tarpon Springs have poured my heart and soul into making sure that this piece of property is preserved. And you all know my feelings on the matter, so I won't belabor it. But I just feel like you really need to preserve this piece of property. I understand development rights, but just like Ms. Hulis said, once it's gone, it's gone. No one's ever going to rebuild the wetlands, no one's ever going to rebuild the trees. We need to preserve this piece of property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? I hear not. The public portion of the meeting is now closed. And we go to commission comments. Vice Mayor, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. Thank you for your public comments tonight. The fact that everyone spoke, I think we should go ahead and vote on the fact that the board supports that the Hayes Road is not constructed. I think it's worth formalizing it and putting it into the record because it's not feasible. So I would make that motion that the city commission agrees with the applicant that the Hayes Road is not feasible and it will not be constructed as part of this project if the project were to move forward.
Second.
Do we have any comments on that? We have a motion to.
I don't have any comments on the motion, but is that it for commission comments?
No, ask him if you have any comments.
I'm not sure I understand. Comments on this motion or just comments in general?
Just can be from the motion. If you want something else to say, you can.
Can I say that?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it's real interesting. And I very much appreciate everybody coming out this evening. And I'm glad everybody had to speak. The Sierra Club, the Audubon Society is very important to us. And the number, the West Clustman Preservation Group is here. Mr. Carter, if you can raise your hand. They're another very active group in our community. And I'm glad to see that. Also, I want to thank the commission's agreement to go ahead and let the residents speak their mind. And you know, it's really interesting. And I picked up on the same comments from the Pinellas County Public Works Director as far as things that got out from, away from Hayes Road. But you know, I very much appreciate Ms. Protos bringing up ABR, Applied Benefits Research Corporation. I was city manager 25 years ago. That was a different time. We had a lot more than 5% open space left in Pinellas County than we do now. But, and that was a campus-type project that would have brought 1,200 jobs to the community, not 1,000 or so more. Residents contributing to the traffic and things and badly needed jobs for people that live just on the east side. And also, that particular employer was willing to take people to St. Petersburg College for educating them and bringing them back and so forth. So it was a pretty good deal. But I was city manager and just like that man sitting all the way over in the corner, I really didn't have a whole lot to do with the decision on that. But if I would have been up here, I probably would have made that decision. And if I would have been, and if I'm being given credit for that, ABR, then I'd also like to add the fact that during that same tenure as city manager, we ordered, we added the 70-acre, 74-acre North Anclot River Nature Park, which is the exact same size of what we're talking about right now. So we did that while I was city manager. At the same time, we talked about Applied Benefits Research Corporation. In addition, if you remember Stauffer Chemical with all the buildings over there, we helped close that, clean it up. And it's now a beautiful open space, but certainly it's still a superfund site that has to be monitored. In addition, the sports complex, if you remember the widening of Tarpon Avenue, we struck a deal with Pinellas County about purchasing that acreage back there. I think it was about 30 acres or so. And created an open space, a sports complex off Jasmine Avenue at that same time. So from the standpoint of what we see right now of only. So from the standpoint of what we see right now, of only having five percent of open state space now that's left, and we need to actually protect that, times were different. But even back then, we did what we had to do to create Tarpon Springs for what it is today. So I have absolutely no remorse over ABR. By the way, it didn't happen. They went down to St. Petersburg, and now we're still left with this site. Thank goodness for that. We can do something with it. It's still not built on. And so I'd be very interested in hearing what the next proposal's going to be concerning this project and this second access that we're going to talk about. I don't want to say too much about that because we're going to get into a quasi-judicial process on that. But I just wanted to kind of calibrate everybody that's out here, their thoughts of where we were twenty-five years ago as compared to what we are right now. We are in a much more severe situation now than we were twenty-five years ago with the number of people in town, the number of construction that's take place, and the amount of flooding. I can guarantee you flooding occurs a lot more now than it did twenty-five years ago. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. In closing, I would like to thank every one of you for being here and the people that already left. You provided us with your input, and I personally appreciate it. In regards to the Hayes Road, according to the county, they review the feasibility study, and they say, "If we build this, it's going to create problems to, to the neighbors, problems to the residents there." So this is one of the reasons why no one's in favor of building the Hayes Road. Okay? Maybe the idea was good at the time to have a second access using the Hayes Road, but this is why the feasibility study was ordered and to make sure that, you know, there would be any problems and the outcome for the Hayes Road wasn't, wasn't positive. And I want to, for the record, I'd like to say that the applicant actually paid sixty-five thousand dollars for the, for the study to make sure that we have, so that way we make the, the right decision. As was mentioned earlier, that the applicant is going to issue another application, so the process is going to have to start all over again, which means he's going to have to go to the planning and zoning and then to the BOC first and second reading. So we still have many meetings that we have to go through. We do have a motion and second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in, I just want to make sure that we all understand that normally we make the motion in the affirmative, and then you either vote it up or down. Right now, just so that there's clarity's sake, everybody understands this motion is in the negative, so when you, when you make your vote. Normally, we do it in the affirmative. In other words, approve it and then, and vote it down.
Mr. Sierra Attorney, I think it'd be better if we change it and make it an affirmative like we always do. And I will ask the person, our vice mayor, if we make the motion, if he wants to change that.
Prove. So, right, but the language needs to be somewhere of, it, we need to approve.
In my opinion is that you can say that the decision on the Hayes Road construction alternative or the secondary access of the Anclot Harbor, and you just say that you make an motion to approve, and then if we don't want it, we just.
I understand that, but, I mean, city attorney, can you help me understand? So I'm just talking about the money that's tied to it, right? So if it's not feasible, we're voting no that it's not feasible? I mean, I just want to make sure that that's, we're not losing that opportunity.
You're not losing any opportunity to do anything. All you're doing is you're making a decision whether you're going to approve the Hayes Road construction. So it'd be a motion to approve the Hayes Road construction alternative for the secondary access to Anclot Harbor Apartment Project, and you can vote it down.
Okay.
Yep.
So for clarity, when it's written in the paper and stuff, this is a formality. I don't support it. I'm going to vote no for it. But make a motion to approve Hayes Road to be built. As proposed.
Second.
And real call, please.
Mr. Vaticiotes?
No.
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
No.
Mayor, who's this?
No. So the outcome is the same. We just have to do it with the right procedure, okay? All right. So that concludes the special agenda tonight, and we go to staff comments. Chief Young, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Attorney, any comments?
No further comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Licouris?
No, sir.
Ms. Jacobs?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
No comments. Thank you.
Commission Donovan?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Commission Vaticiotes?
Mayor, just while everybody's here, just a reminder of the workshop on Saturday at St. Petersburg College concerning the strategic plan. I believe it starts at three o'clock. Is that correct? Ms. Jacobs?
I want to say yes.
I thought it was.
I believe it's. It's two o'clock.
I want to say two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock? Two o'clock. So if you're interested in the strategic plan, I know a couple of you mentioned that this evening, we'll be having a workshop at St. Petersburg College concerning that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, that concludes the special session, and it adjourns at nine o'clock. Good night, everybody.